Sorry.
That's all right. Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and open up the City of North Plains City Council regular session meeting at seven o'clock for Monday, sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, so please stand for the legend.
I'm from the United States of America. And who spans one nation under God.
Lori, roll call.
Thank you. Mayor Lenahan.
Here.
Councillor Page. Councillor Martinez.
Here.
Councillor Payton.
Here.
Councillor Sheldon.
President.
And Councillors Kendall and Smith are excused this evening.
Great. Thank you very much, Lori. Item number five in our agenda is the consent agenda tonight. We're approving October sixteenth regular session agenda, and we're also approving of the October second, twenty twenty-three City Council minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes that we need to be aware of? All right, I'll entertain them. From the rolling event. One second. All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? There are none. All voters in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. There are none. Motion carrier. Thank you. Item six is public comment. This is the time that we wish for anyone in the Jesse Mays or online to speak on matters not on the agenda. Lori, I have one written here in the audience. Is there anything online or submitted?
Nothing was submitted prior to the meeting, and I think I don't see anybody raising their hand. I'm not sure who one of those people are.
All right, then I'll go ahead and call Aaron Nichols to the table. Please state your name and your address for the record.
No. Good evening, Mayor and Councillors. My name is Aaron Nichols. I live eleven thousand Northwest Jackson 40 Road, nearby next door to the North Farm. And if you know who I'm part of, Friends of North Plains, Mark Rode, got his signature, Street for Ordinance four nine either, or other kind of extension with others. Over the last two weeks, we visited every neighborhood and almost every house in North Plains. This morning, we turned in three hundred and forty signatures, ninety-seven more than needed without a ballot. I personally talked to a hundred, about a hundred people. About seventy-five percent were very happy to sign a referendum after your city map and realizing that the size of the expansion. Having talked to so many voters and seen the reports of other volunteers who reported similar sentiment, I'm quite optimistic for large to not know, well, I know vote may. That said, the goal of our group and the goal of most of the voters we spoke to, it's not no growth, it's smart growth. I've sat here before and asked the those with the stake in the expansion, whether they're citizens in town or post or nearby who are worried about their livelihoods and their industry being included. I think we can, I think we can see the housing needs and the reasonable employment needs of the city, and that's why I put it. I think we can make a better UGB plan than join law support and help constituents and neighbors. I understand you wish to wait till after May and see how this expansion plan fares. There, you can for expansion with funding and other tax dollars. You keep in mind, there is one, and you have a good chance of repeal in seven months. Perhaps some of the money used could be used to outreach and planning for a new, more modern, better, or urban growth plan and more expansion. Perhaps we can work together to gain more meetings in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, tonight is staff report night. It's always great to see our staff and hear what is going on. So at this time, I'll go ahead and have Robyn come up.
May Mayor and City Councillors. I just want to recognize that this is Friends of Library Meet, and our wonderful Friends group makes or makes it possible for us to purchase about twenty-five percent more items to spend out to our pre-members than we would be able to purchase without their support. And they also make special programs possible. So they're doing a membership drive this week, and they have a little display at the library, and they're raffling off some wonderful baskets. So stop by and pick a look and renew. Spread the word that it's time to renew membership for the Friends. And I just want to say that our library is an outlier in the county of increasing number of checkouts by double digits over the previous year. We continue to do so. And while other libraries are staying relatively flat or the same or as the year before, we're growing those checkouts in double digits. So lots and lots of use of our wonderful library. And we have some fun things coming up. We have lots going on. We have two great new partnerships, one with 4H to do an elementary school age STEM program that they made, they were rockets, they launched them this month and next month. I think there's so many circuits. And then PSU is also partnering with the library. Their universal learning universal design learning cohort there at the PSU is doing a workshop in our library for inclusive storytime. And we have at least five other cities staff joining that workshop to learn more about how to do a sensory-friendly and inclusive storytime. Those are some of the highlights. Any questions?
Awesome. Comments, questions for everyone?
I like what you guys do. There's always something happening at the library. Now we need we animal that just said that the goodness of the ninety years of our vision is really fun. That's a switch.
Yeah.
So thanks.
No, I'm very, I like the idea of this stuff, animal sweep over there, and so I'd love to, you know, figure out how I could maybe partner with another parent or two that has little kids. I don't have any, you know. I don't know. Yeah, that sounds like fun. It really does. So and during a meeting today that I had with other Washington County mayors, and there is huge support for trying to figure out how the WCLS can well, they can help me do better with their budget to help libraries and to make it more sustainable for all communities. So there was overwhelming support from all of us mayors. So just so that you know that we're constantly advocating for the library system with with the folks that we need in those particular meetings. Thank you. That's wonderful to hear. And I don't, I don't need that. Great. I don't need you.
If I may, I'm glad that's a good segue. I was gonna have Ramen, Robin, maybe you could remind us what WCCLS, the administration is doing at the direction of the Board of Commissioners and why? Maybe a one-minute overview of what our budget is.
Of what?
The city portion and the county portion. Yeah.
So right now, there's funding in government, governance, there's an RFP up by the county to redraw the funding and governance structure of the WCLS. And right now, City General Fund covers about sixty percent of the cost of our library here in North Plains, and it's about forty percent comes from the county transfer that that is from the levy, the Washington County Library Levy that all Washington County residents pay. And then also part of that is a general fund transfer that the county does, which puts a legacy from when they consolidated taxes a long time ago in the nineties. And so basically the process, and it's in that there's an RFP posted right now, will look at do member libraries have any responsibility from their own agency, you know, like to match costs? What's the minimum acceptable amount of library service and how much of the cost? How can we make sure everyone has access to that in the county? Those kinds of things. So it's a really important project, and he's representing the small cities. He was on the RFP portion and selecting or scoring the application. So that's the
Thank you for that. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Robyn.
Good evening. Looking over the stats that we had for September, North Plains self-initiator responded to two hundred and ninety-seven calls. For September, that's right in the meeting there. The line of the, we talked about, really what I look at is the public demand calls and kind of reports. And we're still right in the mean for September, both for the city and and what the deputies did this quarter. This month, we go to the third quarter, which is the next page. And it looks like the public demand and the reports are just kind of right there in the meetings. And of course, if you look down at the bottom, you've got the hour of the day, and it's the bathroom where you call it right every noon, one in nine P M. So it's right when we're having a deputy in North Plains. I know I go back and I look at, we've had this conversation before, but I always look at the self-initiated numbers, and it seems so inflated and so high versus like the traffic stops. Because I know I think of like traffic stops being self-initiated. And I keep having in mind myself, and so I just wanted to make sure and and remind folks that the self-initiated book enough, there's a lot of different things that involve self-initiated. So like traffic details. So when we put ourselves on a traffic detail, that goes into the column of self-initiated. Now, the reality is that traffic stops come out of a lot of our traffic details. However, we consider the traffic detail to be on multiple spots in the city. So within a day, we could be at five or six different traffic details, but we're looking at people that are speeding or running stop signs or whatever. So we end up getting more of those, and we're actually going to stop, that stops. You can say, why is that? Because a lot of times you see the cops and they stop or stop sign. Or they see us, they go down, or they're just not speeding or filling a stop. So we're having more traffic detail. Another thing is like extra patrols and premise checks every time we start to tell them out, especially some of the houses we have there by the city that those end up going up on premise checks and stuff like that, as well as community contacts, when we're just talking to people whether that be at the school or here at the city council, those those kind of add up. In addition to that, there's some follow-up, some stops. So I understand that the traffic stops are, you can show us traffic stops, and there's a lot more brain that goes into self-initiated that we're doing than just stopping cars. And that's why that number again, looks so much more genuine. And a lot of that is like, we're just trying to document the actual work that we're doing. In addition to that, really what the big news that I have, which is, it's not great, is Chuck LeVine. So the unfortunate part is he's been injured and and he's not available to work for an extended period of time. And that leaves a gap, you know, where people that are already going to play in the office that we have. So last Friday, I posted that I'm in the process of trying to fill that gap with a regular deputy, who ended up putting a regular police officer in North Plains, same person to fill in for Chuck until he gets back and you help him. The good news, bad news, Chuck's not available. He's fine, by the way, but he is unfortunately, he's off and he can't work. That's the bad news. The good news is we've already gotten, I mean, I posted it Friday, and we've already got two possibly candidates who are saying they'd like to work in North Plain. At least in the fill-in. And I really believe that that fill-in portion is going to be positive for someone wanting to apply that actually the the vacancy. Now, hopefully that's not going to be for a long time, because as far as Chuck, they both own really well, and I like the speed recovery of Chuck. Maybe it was fantastic. So that's the good news, is people are starting to want to, think they want to work down in North Plain, which is, which is great for us. Other than that, I have any questions if you'd like?
But definitely express our, you know, our concern and certainly hope for speedy recovery for author shots. I'm sure that, you know, if folks want to reach out via email, I'm sure he's still maybe checking in email, I think.
I'm sure.
Okay. Good. Send him out as well, which is, thank you.
I have a question, and I realize that this might fall out of your, of our jurisdiction. But I noticed in Mays, they have an HOA meeting tonight in the neighborhood where a little boy was tragically killed last week. And I was just curious if we could provide any insights to, if you know what the cause was? It sounds like speed is not a factor, and I'm just thinking I had to, tonight's agenda, when we're talking about clear vision standards. And just curious if we can provide any insight that's publicly available as to maybe what the factor was in that crash.
We don't know. I don't, I don't have an official. I don't know the information. I know some of the deputies were there. And I don't have an official knowledge of what, there's been specific cause to the crash. But I do know that it wasn't even like clear vision wasn't an issue, and it wasn't speeding. So I don't know exactly what the cause is, but those two were not those issues were reliable with the forcing why that happened.
And then my other reflection was, I noticed in some of the previous reports, there was a DUI arrest in Sunset Ridge. And was that something a citizen called in? Was it just happenstance? A deputy was patrolling? Can you provide any details on that?
Yeah, it was off, it was a crash. Where there was a crash into a house, very minor, very minor. And the driver ended up being intoxicated. That's why. So we went through this. It was a call, they presumed it was a crash. And it wasn't until the deputy investigated one and figured out the toxic. That's how we found it.
Stop me if you don't. Anyone else? Questions for Jamie?
I have a question. And that comes maybe back down towards not so much what happened at Banks, because it's happened to be here before, been a long time, but nobody wants to see that. And my thoughts are about along the lines of the prevention aspect, the promotion of street safety and some of those things. And I I think about some of the converted that used to play, probably by the ad council, where the ball runs out in the road. I think Shell Oil Company now is sponsoring a lot of those. You know, for kids not to be chasing the ball out into the street. So, you know, I think about some of those things in the close proximity not only our newer neighborhoods, but our existing neighborhoods. And and part of my thought there was, okay, you know, we can't, we can't control that, but we can certainly you know, have public information about making sure that that we teach that to the kids. And I, I don't know what's available for that kind of thing, but the other piece was, I want to make sure that nobody goes without a helmet in this town. So I presume you have helmets from the Knights of Pivvius that you can distribute as you need. And I'm just not sure where that's at. So I don't know if we have helmets, we don't have helmets. I don't know if they have them in their patrol cars. I just want to make sure that we don't lose any continuity in having that program so that we can disseminate a helmet to somebody who's not using them.
So we do have a helmet at the office. So we have them available. Unfortunately, some of the cards are patent, I've changed base. But we have the ability to get the helmets to the children, whether that's they run back, hey, where do you live? And we'll go back and we'll get you that helmet.
Okay.
So they're there. We have them. We've got the Spider-Man helmets right now. So little blue spikes, they're there, they're in the office, and ready to be handed out.
How many do you have?
I think we have four on hand right now.
All right, I mean, I guess it would be really nice to go around and see some kids on a bike without helmets, maybe just home. Whatever.
We can supply whatever they need. They could be bagging headquarters for that matter. I don't, it doesn't matter to me, but you know, we can give you a case at a time. I mean, I don't know what the demand is, but I don't want to see anybody going without one, and I want to make sure that we don't run out. So whether or not our helmets we provide are school Spider-Man, it doesn't really matter to me. It's just a matter of somebody make sure that they're wearing them.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Chief? Thank you, sir. All right. Public Works. Are you family?
I, yeah. Thanks, Madam Mayor. Dustin, Public Works Director. Dustin is at a family wedding in Missouri right now. He gets back late tonight. I really don't have a lot other here to report in his, what he has here written down. Maybe two things I will just touch on quickly. One of those is related to traffic is we have the basis board for some permanent speed radar signs on Commercial Street in North. They're all cured. Now we're just waiting for the equipment to arrive, and that should, supposed to be at the end of this month, so we can get that up early November for those both of those east-west streets. And we have temporary signs too that can rotate around town. We were just having a problem with the with what the vendor sent us. So they came out last week. We're trying to troubleshoot something, but we have those two that four more signs that can go around town, kind of the the trouble areas of speeding. The other, the other thing too is we have all the permits and everything necessary, clean water surfaces and all that to start work on three thirteenth. The contractor is ready to go. We're waiting on one last piece with the, with with the bond payment for clean water services. And that's, that's on our end, so we're hoping that starts in November as well.
Any questions for Andy?
Other than that, I will just say, Swallow Valley Water been very helpful. My guys did a lot of, they fixed, I think it was eight hydrants over the last month or so. They've done hydrant maintenance on every hydrant in town, and now they're hitting all the valves in town too. And we, as you probably remember, we started a GIS program earlier this year. So all of those inputs are getting added to the GIS program. So it's a lot of work at once, but it'll benefit us going into the future. So they're, they're kind of correcting all the information there from hydrants to valves to manholes and and everything in there. And let's see, there was one more thing I was gonna touch on. Well, we'll talk about Public Works Building later on. Yeah.
Great. Thank you. I know everyone is getting very excited about new pickup. That's always a topic this time of the year, but I see that people starting in November.
Yeah, we're shooting a first week in November, and the guys are just gonna be ready. We have one more set of hands this year. So I, we're gonna, I think they're gonna shoot for every two, three-week pickup, but also just they're also very willing and planning to be flexible to just, if we have to extend it a week or two, okay, we're gonna do that. And so we're, everybody's on board with that. But we'll be pushing out some information. Next week was the plan. They're gearing up with getting all the trucks and everything ready this week.
Yeah, I know it's not an exact science, but you know, I'm even thinking I could use one of my neighborhood's trees, like losing leaves like crazy, but.
The rain did, yeah. I spent the weekend raking my yard, and my neighbors got this huge oak, and and it's like, there's nothing that's fallen yet.
All right. Thank you. Playing.
Steve, yeah. Steve is, Steve is out ill. He went home ill at about three P M. Today. He didn't look great. So he needs, he's not gonna zoom in tonight either. He wasn't doing well. Let me pull up his and see if there's anything to touch on there. I don't think so. I know that they had a good work session with the Planning Commission last week, looking at sign code and doing some amendments. And I think it would be good to have a joint session with the Planning Commission and City Council before the end of the year, potentially before a Planning Commission meeting to go over some of these proposed text amendments.
Any questions?
I guess the other thing I'll say is Rowan has hit the ground running, providing some staff, staff support to to planning and very eager to to help with that. So he's already been doing a lot of plan review and building plot reviews for Bryn Hill. So just kind of came in and been very eager to to assist.
Right. I guess, Bill, you're online with us?
I am. Hello, everybody. So the October report includes, as you've had time review, but the October report covers really basically the first quarter of F Y twenty-four. And so it's a little bit longer. It was a little bit longer to cover all of our capital funds, including the Urban Renewal Agency. So you kind of have your quarterly update of all that, too. I don't, you know, I don't really have any kind of major stories or anything report regarding the general fund, Streets Fund, or the Water Fund for that matter, water, water revenue continuing to be a little bit higher because of the warmer weather. That's obviously coming to an end in mid-October. But September was a warm September in the first few weeks, first couple of weeks of October were had some unusually warm days, of course. So we'll see how that shakes out in the revenue figures for the Water Fund, but so far, so good on revenue there for that fund, and expenses are at or below where they should be at this point for the Water Fund as well. Jesse Mays Center continues to, we kind of had a little bit of a slowdown in terms of kind of bigger building rentals, but the pavilion out, the covered pavilion outside continues to, continues to be a popular place for people to reserve and use for birthday parties, that sort of thing. The playground is very much making Jesse Mays a, a, a place of interest to come and have events and that sort of thing. So that's been kind of a halo effect of all the great park improvements that have happened outside. I guess the big story really for the entire report is just that September was a really good month in terms of overdue accounts being brought current. Past or the previous two months, I had come to you and had mentioned that we had a lot, we had a sizable jump in overdue water accounts. And for both the previous months in August, well, excuse me, for July, the month of July and the month of August, I reported that it was overwhelmingly homeowners associations that for whatever reason were behind, and you know, were aging accounts. Well, during the month of September, they, they all came in and got current as well as a number of residents. So we're down to one hundred and thirty-three overdue accounts in total for the city at the end of September. That's eighty-eight fewer overdue accounts during the month during the month of, so at the, by the end of the month of September, and we brought in a little over thirty-four thousand dollars in payment of overdue accounts. So the Water Fund is very much where it needs to be now. As far as capital accounts go, you know, no major stories there. S D C revenue and T D T revenue from Bryn Hill developments continue to kind of be the big revenue stream for most of the, most of the funds. The Red House purchase was registered in the in the Urban Renewal Agency, so that's been accounted. So that kind of shows up as a major increase in in capital expense for the U R A, but within, within budget, we we budgeted well over that for property purchases. The Public Works Building has been seeing, of course, activity in terms of planning of the facility. And Andy will talk more about that in a bit, so I won't spend too much time there. Otherwise, you know, first three months, warm, good water revenue. General Fund departments pretty much where they should be. And the capital funds really just kind of showing the the benefit of continued construction in S D C and T D T revenue for the most part. The other thing is I have kind of a longer blurb there about the adjustment to how we're, we're looking, we're looking at proposing, potentially proposing changing how we account from modified accrual to modified cash basis, which a small city like ours can do, and it's far more common for a smaller city like ours to do that. It meets all reporting requirements, all audit requirements. We've got clearance from legal on our debt, current debt issue, as well as the ability, you know, any impact to future debt issues we might take on. But it's just a simpler, you know, the city doesn't have a bunch of leases, and it doesn't, there's just a bunch of complicating thing, complicated transactions and accounting issues that the city isn't big, so it doesn't have a lot of those things, unlike a larger city. So our audits, our financial reporting and our audits moving forward, if we were to do this, would be, would ultimately be less expensive and take less time as well. So anyway, just something we're pulling together and we'll come to you to talk about at a future date with a bit more info. And I noticed on the fuel tax revenue update, we collected fifteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-one cents in fuel tax revenue. I forgot to delete the fourteen nine oh three. That's from the previous month's report. So this month, we, we collected a little over fifteen six in local fuel tax, and that still is a in local fuel tax and that still, um, is a pretty good uptick compared to where it was a year ago. So our new operator is doing really well and doing a good job of, of increasing business at their, um, at their location. So that's been a great story for the, um, to the, the, the transportation bond fund for, for, you know, pay, revenue for paying for debt service. Um, any, any other questions? I'm happy to, um, answer, but that's my report.
That's okay.
The, uh, gas station, do you want to answer the question?
I, I can take this one, Bill.
Yeah, go ahead.
They are gonna, I think the existing bays are going to be for, um, I made that around that. I think that maybe the existing bays are gonna be for gas and they're gonna add some diesel, uh, pumps closer to the, um, west edge, closer to that. I think they're gonna double those, they may double the number of pumps. Yeah. But they're definitely gonna have bays for diesel, um, just like Chevron has. But they're, they're definitely gonna try to utilize that large parking lot more for, for more pumps. And they're gonna, and they're gonna do a ba- basically a design project on the interior too for the store.
Cool.
Yeah.
It has to be about to get around here.
I, I don't know the, the timeline. Steve has those details, but we can certainly get him to you next meeting.
Okay.
Hi, Bill.
Howdy.
Question on, uh, the percentages under the capital funds. I just wanted to understand. It looks like, uh, one thirteen, which is U R A, we're showing at eighty-one percent. I'm thinking that that, uh, the purchase of the Red House has something to do with that?
Ye- yes, the, the council, Council Sheldon, that is specifically because of the Red House. Um, so the, the purchase is registered there at a little over three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. And so in one chunk of expenditure, so to speak, we're ahead of kind of at where we should be for a, average monthly spending. Um, but we're well within the biennial two point, two point two eight million dollars, but that's, that's overwhelmingly the, the reason for that number.
Okay, that's what I wanted to understand because when I look at this, I think about it in the terms of what is, how, what's, what's that number relate to? And it, there isn't anything in the table that tells me what it relates to. So that makes sense. So that probably ties up some other loose ends. I had questions on some of the other funds. Uh, so I'm gonna skip over that. And then the thing that I'm interested in, because you mentioned it, but I have interest in is the modified cash basis. So I'm familiar with both the accrual, cash basis, accounting and some of those things. I'm just kind of interested in. Uh, you know, I can understand the, the, the kind of the nuts and bolts of why that's a better way to go. I'm just more interested if we're gonna hear more about that and how that's done at some point. Even if it's not in the meeting, but it's delivered to us. So you know, I wanna have a better understanding on why that's, you know, I can understand the labor hours. I just wanna understand the benefits to accounting for our, our expenses and our revenue in that fashion.
Thank you, Council Sheldon. Yeah, we'll, we'll come, we'll come to you with far more information. We may have um, our audit consultant participate in some kind of meeting or presentation to talk about it, to give you um, a drill down on some of the, some of it. But, um, since the, since the city isn't many more departments and many more properties and, and even leasing property, uh, commercial property for, for police department locations and, you know, all that. Um, what we've learned is, i- is part of going out and finding other potential city municipal auditors to work with us. One thing we've discovered is that, is that, um, we in other cities are learning that there's no reason why a smaller city like ours shouldn't uh, be on modified cash basis. And it's possible that a lot of other cities frustration with their auditors comes out of doing audits based on an accounting basis that is unnecessary for that agency. There's a lot of, kind of a lot of frustration with auditors and that sounds like that's part of it. And so, um, part of it is best practices, um, and part of it is simplifying things where um, they can be simpler, yet we still meet, meet the, the need of reporting to, you know, reporting to you and the community about our financial, um, performance. Um, and the, and well, and the secretary, Secretary of State's office as well, but we'll come to you with far more information about that when the time is, is right, but it'll be before long.
Okay, thank you.
Um, additional or like other cities in the state that, um, are moving towards this type of approach for accounting?
Th- that's right, Mayor. We, we would be far from alone, particularly for, you know, uh, much smaller cities. Um, yeah, no, we were, we were, we were informed that it's far more common for, you know, cities twenty, thirty, fifty thousand plus, um, you know, small cities don't need to do this. Um, I mean, we've learned a few other things as well in talking to other potential auditors about, you know, how we can do things better and be ready for audit and, and some improvements we might consider. So this, it's been, it's, it's definitely been an educational experience for us.
Thank you, Bill. Um, anyone else? Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to, um, A A. We have a public hearing for the ordinance, um, ordinance four nine one is submitting the North Plains Municipal Code for Clear Vision Areas. Um, this will be the, uh, second reading, um, before I ask for a motion. Just wanted to make sure whether any other topics or comments. All right. I will order a motion on ordinance four nine one.
I move to do a second reading of ordinance number four nine one. All right, I'm on.
I will second. All right, uh, we currently have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, Lori, can we call for the vote?
Please.
All right. So, um, we have Counselor Martinez. Nay. Counselor Page.
Yay.
Counselor Payton?
Yay.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yay.
And Mayor Lanning is also a yay. So the one, two, three, we have four of them. Okay, correct. So the motion carries. Organics number four nine one is an ordinance submitting section one five five point six five six of the North Plains Municipal Code regarding clear vision areas. All right, and now may I have a motion to adopt ordinance number four nine one?
Move to adopt orders four nine one and order submitting section one five five six, five six of the North Plains Municipal Code regarding clear vision area.
Oh, second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right. Let me call for the vote. Counselor, um, Sheldon.
Yay.
Counselor Payton?
Yay.
Counselor Page?
Yay.
Counselor Martinez?
Nay.
And then Mayor Lanning is also a yay. So at this point we have four of one and then yes, have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up we have agenda item number nine A. This is resolution number two ten four six, authorizing the amendment to the C N dash G C contract with Swinerton. And, um, at this time I'm just going to ask for, um, either any expertise contact or is there anyone, um, on the dice?
Mr. McHugh? I'm gonna recuse myself, uh, based on the grounds that, uh, I have a financialist interest in one or more uh, parties to this agreement. So with that, I'll be abstaining from any comment and the vote.
Thank you, Counselor Sheldon. Andy, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Okay, thanks, Madam Mayor. I prepared this whole week for comments from Council Sheldon, so I may be disappointed now. Um, no, I'm kidding, kidding. Um, so I tried to provide it, provide a background, um, in the document and the staff report here about kind of what, what we're doing with, um, construction manager, general contractor approach, C M G C, and it's a way to bring in a potential, um, contractor earlier on in the process while you're still um, earlier, um, in the design, uh, process. So that's the approach we took. If you remember back in the spring, um, the council awarded a pre-construction and C M G C agreement to, uh, Swinerton after doing um, an R F P and a series of interviews for potential contractors. What pre-construction did was basically take us to the point where we are today, which finalized the design, um, secured permitting, uh, got hard bids from subcontractors all lining up to an eventual G M P, a guaranteed maximum price, and that is the cost to deliver the construction of the project. Um, in theory, um, you've done all that work. You've had your contractor on board the whole time. You should be, um, the, the goal, one of the goals would be to avoid change orders and any surprises down the road because they're coming in with clear eyes along with everyone else into the project. Um, what is happening? So, um, kind of field changes, cha- uh, change orders, um, requests for information, R F Is. Um, one of, one of the benefits of that is try to, to, to avoid all those things because they've been, um, along the journey, um, in the project. The last couple of months, we've been, um, focused a lot on, uh, value engineering, V E with our, um, project team and a few of those folks are here today. Um, Jason's in the left, Nick's on the right. They're from process architecture. They've been really good to work with, um, Nick especially. I mean, Jason's a good guy, but Nick, Nick has really dug into every, um, every bid that's come in, every time we've worked with Swinerton and Zach in the middle is, is with Swinerton, uh, right, Zach. Okay. I haven't, um, we haven't worked together a lot. Andrew, I know is gonna, is going to be here and he, he had an issue tonight, but thank you for being here. Um, but throughout this value engineering journey, um, Nick, um, on, on the right, there's been very instrumental in helping us really dig down into the details and asking hard questions about even some of the smallest minutia, five thousand dollar, um, um, issues. Um, what, what are those bird things called? Bird? Bird frit? Yeah, even bird frit. What, you know, it's, I think those are the spikes that keep birds from going up? Okay. Yeah, yeah, just i- the, the smallest details. I've been, I've been very impressed and been very good to work with and it's been, um, uh, comfort to have those guys on our side, um, working through this. At the same time, Swinerton has a track record of doing, um, these C G M C, C M G C projects and working with mass timber, which is what this, um, project is going to incorporate. We thought from the very beginning. And this goes back to the facility study. We, we had done with a different architect that the community wanted, wanted to, uh, you know, had kind of aspirations on seeing some of this nice, beautiful timber involved in our civic buildings. So that was one of the choices we made early on. And not only is it kind of aesthetically nice and it's being used more and more, but the cost delta is pretty much about the same when you use that, uh, material. And Swinerton has a, uh, an arm of their company Timber Lab that actually does a lot of the mass production of timber and then installation too. So we thought they were a good fit. Um, after interviewing them and two other firms. Um, so all that being said, I kind of laid out here with the cost, um, implications are back in twenty twenty when we did our facilities, uh, assessment. Um, we had eleven thousand square foot building at a cost of seven point two million, uh, roughly, if constructed in twenty twenty-one. Obviously, we all know what's happened with costs in the last couple of years, but we did add on a second story, which added about twenty-five hundred square feet to the building. And then we've got, uh, P V, foldable T X cells, uh, solar panels on top of that. A four hundred and fifty K W backup generator. Um, we had to do some site improvements and ground improvements. If you remember where that reservoir is, we had to do something similar here for, for stability, especially because it's going to be an emergency operations center. So all those things did escalate the cost to, um, about seven point seven million dollars, but um, given all those factors, we think that's pretty reasonable and that especially if, after we've done five or six revisions of value engineering, which don't, um, we got to keep everything we want in the project. You know, we still have four bay doors. We still have a second floor, which is going to be fully built out, which, um, those were things that we didn't want to end up doing down the road. We just wanted to try to get them done now because the cost for those would only be higher later on. So, um, that brings the total cost to roughly seven point seven million there that for the G M P and you see that in the addendum and in the staff report too. So that, that kind of gives my, um, my presentation, high level summary, and then, uh, Jason, Nick, Zach could, can answer any more specific um, project questions that you may have from a architecture, design or C M G C perspective.
I have some questions. Help me. Thank you. Uh, I was just curious. I know we're trying to be extremely physically responsible with the construction of this, um, and just going through the document. There's a lot of terminology that I had to Google and look up, um, and some of those things that made me think, hmm, would this be lead certified? Is that something that's still within the scope of this project or what are the pros and cons? I'm just for that.
Gentlemen.
You're like, is it?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm gonna defer to, to an architect. That's fine. Okay. I think it should be on Jason.
Well.
Yeah.
What, what certify?
Um, the, that's a good question. The certification is something that we typically talk about at the beginning of the project. And it is something that we did this stuff and, um, it's definitely, so the cost actually, all, all you do to get a really sustainable building and there's a lot of benefits. Actually, you, you pay for it for you to get it being certified and it's actually been at a time and expense to a profit. Um, it is all through the ordinance made available, the most recent code too. So that fact is in. And then one of the elements, the superstructure of the building is cross-legged timber. Uh, and that area is sustainable product right now and a sustainable construction that people want to do. So while it's a, gonna be a lead certified building, um, it, it is a very sustainable building, sustainable building practices you're involved in. But it's a great project.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So this is a little, um, more than what we had originally planned for and, and, and I know, um, you know, uh, costs have been going up and, and that sort of thing. And so, um, my thought is thinking into the future, um, I, this is pretty set as far as like the project, what it's gonna cost. I always get a little nervous, um, with these really large numbers and thinking about what if we start to move dirt and then find we need something else? Like, you know, is there a contingency plan for something like that? What ifs? The what ifs?
Well, yeah. So, you know, I mentioned that we, um, you know, the goal for this would be to avoid change orders. That being said, there is what a three percent contingency?
Yeah. Which is typical. So when we started with our smart design estimate, we found fifteen percent. And then typically as you go to each phase, it drops slightly, you know, as you, because we lock in more details, we get more information. And three percent is pretty common for something like this. You do run some risk of, if, if you're digging in the soil or something and something comes up, then you could have to remediate that. But with the, the current design that we have, it, it's hard to, to say there's a zero percent chance, but we are designing for a seismic event. Um, and where there's gonna be a hundred and twenty-seven aggregate chill years. So we're actually digging, it, it, it's hard to say that there, there would be something in the soil that would cause the issues right now. But there is always a small chance, but the, the design that we already had is for a seismic event.
Yeah, you're not gonna know until you start to move dirt.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think just knowing where, what we have experienced with the, uh, water reservoir, um, I think in my mind, I would think, oh, let's just expect something like that to happen.
Yeah.
Right?
And a lot of this, the, the studies in the beginning came from that. We talked with Andy to get more information on what happened with the previous project and then that's what we, G M P route as well too. And one of the things we did, we do some additional due diligence. We talked to some, um, I think it was college, was Andy?
Oregon State.
Oregon, Oregon State.
No, Wazoo. Yeah, because Brian went to Washington State. Sorry. Yeah, yeah.
So we did look at giving another study to actually reevaluate the site as well. So it, it turned out the timing wouldn't have worked out with this project, but, um, we went around and around on the actual sort of conditions for the site. The, with the C L T, even the, the policy, some of the policy, so it, it, there's added benefits to having that conservative type as well too. But there is a contingency still.
Any, anyone else have questions or comments?
This is not my agency. Uh, I have to rely.
This is not my agency. Uh, I have to rely upon this given to me. This is a pretty large amount of money. It's tricky for a, but it's pretty huge. How confident are we that that's, that's what I'm hearing from everybody is a little assertive. We don't know assertively if we're grounded by it. How sure are we? This is, if something happens, we may not have the trouble. So how sure that that's probably gonna be? Because that's still a huge price.
So that's a good question. So the GMP is guaranteed maximum price. So bringing on Swinerton, there are some additional costs for free construction services. That is advantageous to a project when you can bring a, a GCN for free construction services. So they were able to do things like identify um, perform some sort of builder reviews. Identify um supply chain, potential supply chain issues or if you're feeling a burn out in the project. So the, the idea is that they're on board. They're, they're essentially part of the design team early on. So they're giving us real time information from their service. So we're, we're getting critical information that we're putting into our drawing set. When it goes out to bid, it's not like a hard bid. We're remaining large, so we have some things. We're talking about some chain orders and things like that. Um, so we're able to look at the project holistically and let us know if there's things like double coverage or things like um, you know, substitution requests or something that we can get to bring the, the cost down. And the idea of it is that all of that is briefly in our document set before it, it goes out. And um, I mean, I could buy that, kind of like that, speaking with a little bit of that, but I mean, that, there, there are checks and balances in the, in the CMGC process to prevent the, the types of scenario that you're talking about, whether it might be possible of those.
I guess, if Councilor Page, maybe I can answer that. Um, that water reservoir project, yeah, we had done geotechnical test, test pits, things like that. But the extent of the soils wasn't known until they started digging much deeper. We're going into this project with all that information, the, the same, the same testing. It's about a hundred feet away. Our assumption is gonna be, it's just as bad. So that's what's rolled into the, the ground improvements in the, in the GMP. So there may be surprises, but some surprises, but we already know going, I mean, we had these discussions six months ago. No, I'm like, oh God, these soils are crap. So that's, that went into the design considerations and the, in, in the value engineering. The other thing too is, you know, I, I noted it here, but um, you know, we got a sizable grant from the state to do this project. And that allows us to, to make this building um a little bit better. If we were carrying the full burden of this, the, the cost, the city was for this cost, you know, pulling from the general fund and system development charges. It would look a lot different, but we can make this a much better building, longer lasting, more space with a second floor and all these other additions because of that sizable uh grant from the state. So it's, it's um, the city's contribution isn't, I mean, it's, it's uh.
Seven million, right?
Yeah.
It's a lot.
Yeah. Well, we took on the full seven point five for the water reservoir. So it's nice to offset most of that.
That's, it's the true effect.
Yeah. 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 Well, in, in this project too, is gonna help kind of complete some of that water reservoir project by having a backup generator that's gonna tie in every, all of that, we're gonna call it the campus, kind of all those buildings. The pump station and the, and the public works building, they'll all be, they'll all be on the same backup power if anything went, you know, south. So.
Um, hi, Mike.
Nick? Or Zach, actually, it'd be much better. Yeah. There's a long Gantt chart in there, but I don't remember.
Thank you very much for coming. This will be really appreciated.
Yeah, Andy acted like he really wasn't sure what my name was because I just started with Swinerton like four weeks ago. So I didn't want to address what JB's addressing, which is they brought Swinerton in early for this process. So everything that's basically developed around the new work that's been designed. So or anything related to that scope, we're not gonna have our hand up for anything. It's really what the mayor was referring to, that what is underground. And we already kind of alluded to the design and how that blends. And then we also have additional dollars in there for, sorry, for soils that we need to replace, the areas that were laying down pipe. So regarding schedule, um we're still in with the city, trying to get approvals for permit. Looks like we're a few weeks away from there. So mobilization date right now is the thirteenth of next month. If we, if we end up getting those. The end date right now is currently pushed out all the way till March of twenty twenty five with the delivery of the generator, trying to figure out a workaround for that. Um, just recently found out that we were able to pull in the electrical switch gear a little bit earlier. Schedule that was distributed to the team was showing forty-seven weeks to the lead time, which was pushing the completion out until November, December. Uh, the goal is really for a nine-month project. So if we start in November, we try to turn this thing over August, September.
And um, most of the folks that will be um the contractors and things like that, that will be working, I'm thinking local, like most of those folks um relatively local, yes or no?
Job's not bought out yet. I do know that our electrician is global.
Okay.
It was local here. Yeah, we are talking with Brown Sheet Metal Steel, who's in our local firm as well.
Okay.
So I don't know of any other offhand that are locally, directly in North Plains.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
The, who's we charged? I, I do have, like, the idea we have some local companies that can do similar to this work. So how do we, do we reach out to them first? Or is it, is, is there any kind of preference for them for bidding or does Swinerton win?
I was here for that entire process. I know that you got really broad coverage for most of these trades and invited pretty much everybody. I don't know if there's a specific outreach to the firms that are in North Plains. Um, I can certainly talk with Andy afterwards and if there are local firms that are a fit for, for some of these trades. Most of the key trades like electrical, plumbing, um, yeah, key players are already kind of invested there.
Well, what was, what was a local test? That's good. Yes.
All right. Thanks. And this is also on my um wheelhouse, but where does the mass timber come from? Where does that come from?
I think we sourced trees number.
I know that. I just, I'm just asking.
Um, so the, the, and exactly why do they have more? So when we were, when it was being bid out, um, what Swinerton had done is they, uh, Timber Lab was the fabricator. And they have multiple sources where they can bring the CFP from. So.
Okay.
It's a lot of sense is produced in the Pacific Northwest.
Okay.
Um, it's hard to say exactly where it's sourced from. They, they did, I think you guys did get three different bids from three different uh sources though.
We did, yeah. And I don't know if it's sourced from Canada or, yeah, it's local here.
Yeah, we, we have some break companies that, that are street, that's probably why the mayor's asking.
Well, they don't, yeah, maybe.
Well, I'm, I'm not gonna do that, that sort of thing, but I'm just kind of curious if it was really PNW basically sent them off.
Yeah, we, we have to look into it. I'm not quite sure.
It's not that important. Just curious. Thanks. Yeah. Just curious. All right. Any other comments or questions? Thanks for coming to be here for your work. Um, all right. What is the wish of the council? I'm moved to adopt regulations to do for today to, to ensure guaranteeing maximum price for the construction of a new public work facility. Second, all right, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say nay. There are none. Very, thank you very much. And thank you very much for your work. Um, and looking at stuff, looking forward to this project.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we're sending the original. It's been a fun, scary, um, what's the name? So I was looking at emails back from November last year.
Yeah. Yeah. Thanks, guys. Welcome to North Plains, Nick. How you private been here for a while? Nick, Nick is from Carlton, by the way, and they're, they're in the process of building what looks like a nice city hall downtown utilizing mass timber. So that'll be a good project to check out in maybe six months or so. Everything was framed up. Yeah, I went by a couple of weeks ago. Yeah.
All right.
Two-story CLT. Yeah. Day trip. Yeah. They have, yeah, they have nice beverage places there too. If you need, you need something to drink while you're there. So, yeah, yeah.
Food and drink. Don't get me there. I'm done. All right. Um, just looking at the rest of the agenda, you're talking about your new business, unfinished business. And then we'll have in the city.
All right. Well, thanks, Mayor. Um, obviously you get up, all the stuff I, I put out on Fridays. A few other points I'm gonna mention. Obviously, the County Planning Commission is hearing our urban growth boundary expansion, uh their ordinance Wednesday evening, six thirty PM. Uh, we're really working hard to try to get some residents in town to um provide some written testimony, Zoom testimony, in, in-person testimony. Same goes with property owners in the urban growth boundary expansion area too. So if anyone wants to do that from the council, uh the neighbor that wants to, let me know and I can definitely help. And I'm, I'm sure the mayor um would be willing to do so as well. We had a work session a few weeks, weeks ago about what to do with those properties on Commercial Street and like Jason's here for that. And um, in November, we'll come back with uh some kind of feasibility options, what to do with those projects, um really specifically looking at um civic center options for um. A, a couple of different, uh, a couple of different proposals of narrowed down more than from what we heard um previously. Uh, so we'll come back with that as part of an urban renewal uh project. Uh, I, I went to a, it's kind of a, a focus group last week for Washington County Visitors Association. They're changing their name to Explore Twalton Valley ETV. So that's gonna be the new tourism association for Washington County. Something I didn't really put together too much until I had that meeting and they had some different hoteliers there along with tour providers is um. You know, the, the expansion in North Plains will really help, it could potentially help uh transient lodging tax, TLT. Uh, because the region needs more hotels and motels and that's something that's planned in our EOA. Um, so uh, you know, it's, I think it's something that uh, the, the, the tourism industry would be keen on. It's just more places to stay and having folks come and visit Washington County and, and staying and, and paying those, those head taxes. So it's something I, I had really hadn't put together too often until that meeting, how critical that is for a lot of the tour and kind of chamber operators. Um, I went to League of Oregon Cities last week. Um, I know the mayor would, would have wanted to be there, but there's a lot of people that are asking where the mayor was. And it was a, um, I kind of felt like a schlub. So many people asked me where a mayor was. I was like, just ask her, but she wishes. She, she wishes she could be here, but, and your name was on the agenda a few times, but I, I went to some, some good sessions and I, and I, and I hope that, I know it's really hard for councilors, everyone that works, but I really would love it if some, you know, if others could, can make it to one of these someday. That the topics there are great. I went to topics and had a lot of conversations um with experts on homelessness and housing. Um, they had housing strategies for small towns, which is a really unique topic and how, how are small towns um being innovative and um looking at different strategies? When you don't have large tax bases or you don't have affordable housing bonds like in the metro area, you know, what can small, small communities do? And it takes some, some creativity. Um, there were panels on civics, civics engagement. Social media, um, I will tell you this, it's definitely not just here. Every community struggles with managing social media and every community across the state. It is a big challenge and, and it could be worse. I, I go to these things. I am thankful. It, some of these things can be very poisonous in many, many communities. And I feel bad for these people, communities that are smaller than ours. And it can be, um, it can be quite bad on social media. So I'm thankful for that, but it is, it is a challenge and everyone's trying to improve um at that. Um, there was an urban growth boundary expansion panel I went to to see what other communities are doing. McMinville took them twenty-five years to get their UGB through. Um, so it takes, you know, it's, there's a lot of, a lot of hurdles to go through for these things. Successful local option levies, if we want to go down that route again. Um, and then artificial intelligence and government, I've been kind of toying around with that a little bit. Um, and how that could either be good or go off the rails. Um, one of the things I've talked to the mayor about is, you know, it, it'd be great if the city council and maybe staff could do something together. And one idea I had was, you know, the week before Christmas, there's no school then. Maybe we could look at perhaps doing a, a breakfast, you know, city council and myself, we can serve breakfast to the staff here, you know, something like that. It might be a good, a good thing to do. And, and I, I think, Cameron, correct me, I, I think the break is the week before Christmas. Is that right? Yeah, that's what I thought. So something there that way doesn't conflict with um school and kids' schedules. So anyway, just a few things on my.
Would, um, would you like, um, each of us to just, um, send you a quick email or something like that um regarding availability that week or?
Yeah, I was, you know, things usually get a little bit easier, easier towards the end of the week. So that Thursday or Friday, maybe we could, you know, maybe it's something to do and, you know, do it, do it kind of on an early side. And, and then folks can, with day jobs can get off and do that, but it might be a nice way to kind of start the, um, start the Christmas season.
Yeah.
Could even do it.
October. I mean, time flies. I think, I wanna make sure that we get in. So we're looking at the, I just wanna make sure I've got the right week, the week, the eighteen is when school is, is outing. Okay. Okay, perfect. So maybe the twenty-first or twenty-second. So we can shoot, just let Andy know and.
Right. Yep.
The twenty-fourth, twenty-second are big, I work, I, uh, work uh that week. It was Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday.
What are your shifts?
What?
What, what's your shift?
So the factory has to run twelve hours a day, so it's a week. So it can't happen evenly. It's impossible. I assume it's a week, yes. So every other Wednesday, which, you know, you have to, my schedule is six, seven. So every other Wednesday, I have a show, it's just five, pretty provision. So uh, the audience Thursday, Friday and Saturday with the sharing of the fourth day on every other Wednesday. That is another Wednesday. So.
When do you start work?
I start at six AM. Management, right?
Are we having a meeting on probably Tuesday? We did a practice in Lula and on the menu that everything. That one, yeah.
Yeah, but maybe let's use that meeting as a, give them a, a.
Um, and we're doing a breakfast.
Well, then we would have dinner.
Well, maybe the breakfast could be the nineteenth instead. You'd be around then. Councilor Page.
I don't know. Your schedule looks like.
Yeah, it was just, right.
You usually start early too.
Where we get the coffee.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, it, it won't be perfect and not everyone can make it. I know that. Just putting it out there and breakfast, I thought, well, you're, you're gonna get the most staff there at that time, you know, if it's during the day. So. Yeah. Yep. Monkey or doodle or one of those things. Yeah.
And I'd be very interested in that, 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 um, that ready evening.
Well, you know, maybe that evening could be some of the board and commissioners.
Yeah, we did that last year.
We could do some of the other boards and commissions and then a breakfast. Um, we could shoot for that. I, I just thought that's a good way to hit um staff. And they, they'd feel, you know, some of them probably never even met the city council. So they'd feel connected a little bit more.
Okay. Um, survey.
I will do that. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I think there's doodle.
There's doodle, doodle ball.
Survey monkey. So.
Yeah.
All right. Um, Andy, anything else that um we want to highlight? I think um. Oh my God, I didn't have a question. It was on our board and I probably was about to, when she talked about her, but there was a thing where it said, uh, we said the name's about unintended death investigation and the rest of the stuff. For trespassing at the senior center. Are those related or is that even red?
I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I don't have those details. Oftentimes he will, he'll give me the information and I'll translate. I I don't, I don't, I don't know. I don't have those details. Oftentimes he will, he'll give me the information and I'll translate. I'll I'll ask him though for the clarification. Yeah.
Anything else for Andy? Council records. I'll keep mine pretty brief. I think that's an issue for the Parks Board. And Bill gave a great presentation, this is planning the G B expansion and it was a pretty light agenda, but there was some brief discussion reviving on a finger thing in the air for a dog park at pretty big purple car. Some kind of a feature, which was news to me and very exciting. But other than that, that is, that is all I have to go through. That's sort of like. And then, well, and that's, you can totally have that group meeting. Senator Smith isn't here, the planning commission, everything, the council page, you have library board.
This one is being changed.
Okay. Okay.
Next Wednesday.
Yeah.
And there wasn't anything on the planning business meeting agenda. Counselor Smith attended. I had said him a thing saying he didn't need to since there wasn't anything, but he just wanted to hang out with us and, you know, so, but there wasn't anything on the agenda.
All right, great. Thank you, Lori.
I have a quick question. I, I love the Cub Scouts, the kids in Cub Scouts and Rita's. Yeah, I'm it, right? Uh, there's all kinds of different things that the Cub Scouts need to do as far as projects go, new projects. Wasn't just the Hope Row? I don't have much of Hope Row. I know more about this area. We have any projects that the city has for small kids to do that maybe play like playing a tree or something? We have any organized or we have made out there that I maybe this could do.
How small kids are we talking?
Second grade.
Seventeen, seventeen.
Yeah, seventy dollars.
And what would I trust my son to do? You know, you don't drop him off. Yeah, let me get that some thought. Yeah. How many, about how many would it be?
It would be five of those. But but always that kind of thing run around well.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
You can go up to ten year olds, right? When I'm looking at, when I'm reading this, five, seven of them, awesome. Organization is really a thing.
Yeah, plant plantings are good. Let me, let me, let me think about that. Maybe we could turn it into a small community project or something. So, okay.
Anything else? Quick, quick question. I just noticed and it might just be a typo on page one twenty three in our packet as the the primary and ultimates for November. And Lori, I just want to confirm or deny, it has been super parks for November thirteen. But then the chart down below from previous mayor says I'm on library board on eleven twenty two. I just wanted to clarify.
I'll check when I get that.
It's a big complicated, the first swap, maybe you just didn't get it after you did the chart.
Did you guys switch something before?
Well, I'm sure something, but I'm gonna swap this, this cover.
I think it's just not updated because I also have, um, which is my for eleven eight and I want to do that on page after it.
I'll get it straightened.
Do we trust the color of the chart?
No, apparently not. Just so you guys know, I had a little issue last week with our migration thing that I apparently wasn't doing right for the last two months and some things weren't getting put updated where they needed to go. But I've been straightened out now. So. So who should be on what?
I think the color chart is right. It's the month of November chart.
Okay. I will check on that.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you. Anything else? All right, I will go ahead and adjourn our council meeting at eight fifteen. Before eight thirty.
I guess.
Have done that?
No.